I think we're ready when you are now.
You're good.
All right, call the meeting to order. Tonight, we're here to talk about the rezoning case CON-22-05, New Gen Tennis Facility. Robin, do you want to call roll, please?
Mr. Powitz.
Here.
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Mr. Pierce. Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Beer.
Here.
All right. Robin, do you want to go through the staff report?
Yeah, so I'll go through this briefly. I know we have some alternate members here who were not present for the previous hearing, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. So the summary, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 3.736 acres from planned commercial and office district to another planned commercial and office district to allow for an indoor-outdoor recreation facility consisting of six pickleball courts with a dome or metal warehouse structure, five tennis courts under a dome, three tennis courts under a permanent roof, office and service building space, a parking area, and landscaping on the property. In 2014, the Township Board of Trustees approved a development plan and text for the Slate Ridge Planned Commercial and Office District East, which includes this property and the parent parcel. The property is surrounded to the north and south by planned commercial and office districts, as well as to the west. To the east is the Congrail Railroad, which is farm residential property owned by Delco. On the next page, you can see the updated development plan, the applicant. The major change on this revised site plan is that access on the parcel was shifted to the north. It is a shared access with the parent parcel directly to the north. It is a full access drive and includes a T-turnaround on the east side. In terms of open space, total open space provided is listed at 42.5% plus or minus 1.59 acres. This is something, just a minor detail, this was the same number that was submitted with the initial application. So we believe that this number may be, may need to be revised based on the updated site plan. And then the other thing regarding the open space, we would like some clarification as to whether this calculation is for the first phase of development or inclusive of all the proposed development on the site. In terms of parking, 63 parking spaces are proposed, including three ADA spaces. There is divergence requested here as this use is not listed in the Orange Township zoning resolution. We do lay out our parking requirements by use, and since this use is not listed in any of those common uses, there is no standard for this. So the applicant is requesting a divergence for the parking, again, 63 total parking spaces. With this revised site layout, the parking setback has been reduced to zero feet on the north side of the property, so the parking spaces will be right up on the property line. We do believe that that will trigger an additional divergence for that reduced setback. Lighting, the applicant did provide a lighting plan that will conform to the lighting standards laid out in the Orange Township zoning resolution. There is one sign proposed as part of this development, which is one two-post ornamental sign to be constructed of aluminum with final content to be determined. The total proposed sign area is 25.4 feet. Building setbacks on the front of the site, which is the west side, is 50 feet from the right away of Green Meadows Drive. To the south, there is a no-build zone. That building setback is 25 feet. The other side on the north, the building setback is 12.5 feet and 40 feet to the rear of the property. Again, so the applicant has requested a total of two divergences. One, again, dealing with the number of parking spaces. The other divergence is requesting to allow each phase, including the first, to be less than five acres of property due to the fact that the entirety of the property to be purchased, developed, and split as a replat by the applicant from the parent parcel is less than five acres. And again, it was not specifically requested, but we do believe that a third divergence will be required to permit the parking setback on the north side. The requirement is that the side parking setbacks for commercial properties is normally six feet, and again, this would take that down to zero. In the comprehensive plan, this parcel is laid out as planned commercial. And in terms of additional comments, again, the additional divergence for the parking setback on the north side. Delaware County Regional Planning, I'll get to their comments in a minute, but Orange Township staff concurs with regional planning's requirement of the installation of a sidewalk or path along the frontage of the site. There was, there was a mention of a sidewalk or path in the development text that it would be installed on one side of Green Meadows. We would like to see a sidewalk or path specifically on the frontage of this property as we believe that this will generate pedestrian traffic from nearby residential developments. And as discussed at the previous public hearing, we would like to see language in the development text regarding the seasonality of the dome structure. I believe the applicant has that language prepared, but it is not in the development text as of yet. For a technical review, the Orange Township Fire Department, they have briefly reviewed these updated site plans. They have told me that the revised site layout appears to meet the intent of the requirements of what they need in order for access, emergency access to the rear of the property. They will not be able to give formal approval until plans are submitted to the fire department for formal approval. Delaware Regional Planning Commission heard this on May 28, I believe. They did recommend conditional approval of the application, subject to the following. Condition one, that a sidewalk or path should be constructed along the frontage of the site. Two, shift the access point to the northern edge of the site and provide a shared access to the parcel to the north, including a lighting plan with approved fixtures, and consult fire department on the need for access along the full length of the development. So with the revised site plan, items two, three, and four that RPC recommended are essentially taken care of. It is only condition one that is still outstanding. I have nothing for...
All right, thank you, Robin. At this time, does the applicant wish to go over the revisions that were made since the last meeting and kind of walk us through maybe addressing some of these staff comments? And please state your name and address.
Members of the commission, my name is Donald Plank. I'm not Rebecca Mott. My office, 411 East Town Street, Columbus. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Also, there's representatives for, if there are specific questions pertaining to the operations, we have representatives from the applicant here as well. Let me, you know, I had the opportunity to listen to the video and audio of the meeting before because, just to bring myself up to speed. And I may repeat a couple of things, but I maybe I'll expound on it. We did get a comment back from the fire department. They said that the fire lane that we're providing and the turnaround are acceptable. It should also be noted that, not stated, but will be shown on plans is the fire hydrants that they're asking to be along the on the access road as well. In addition to the fire hydrants, we've also are working with the seller of the property, who still retains a good portion of it, to deal with the sidewalk issue and the bike path issue along the frontage of the road. And I believe that those requirements are still in the original text. We're not modifying that, so that obligation remains the same. It's not, we have not, we're not asking for a divergence from that. That sidewalk will be extended. And we're working with the property owners to participate in the cost of that. We did provide a lighting plan. I saw that there was a lot of discussion the last meeting about, hey, you may want to put lights because you may want to play at night. And they took that to heart, and that's what they've done. We put a lighting plan together, and that now is a part of the application. The, I think there was also some discussions about where the parking should be, and they moved the parking around, but it's still 63 parking spaces. It's just got shifted around to the different lots. And the issue is, is that, as was stated, the code really doesn't address this type of use. How much parking do you put in? What we look at that is, we feel confident as the users of the property that the number of parking spaces are sufficient because if there's not, there's no place else to go. So we, the parking is important to us as well. And as to the seasonality, the use, we propose language as a, as a condition to your approval, which will find its way into the text. What that language basically says is that our anticipation is that the, the what do we call in it? We're calling it the, I don't want to call it the bubble, but we're calling it the the membrane is going to be up between October and March. But we have a provision, but no later than May 15th. Because depending on what the weather, they may want to keep that up, but the intention is it comes down in the summertime when people play and they will participate outside. We did, as was stated, we now have a shared access. We moved that to the north end of the property. And, and I guess what I would say, just in terms of the actual land use, that it's a perfect location for that piece, for that use. It's at the end of the road, near the railroad tracks, near industrial. And the height of it is 35 feet, so even across the railroad tracks and the residential it's not going to be a burden or have a negative impact. And with that, I know there's two members that were not at the last meeting. If there's any questions you might have, be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, turn it over to the board for any comments.
I'm mostly just curious about the parking divergence, why those are necessary. There may be good reasons for those, but let's see about the setbacks from the six feet to zero. I think the quantity, I think that's good. You guys should decide what the quantity of parking spaces is. You know your business and know where that goes. It's the divergence of this.
You know, with the divergence, we can, we're moving it close to the property line because that north road now is beyond the property line, and that again was negotiations with the current property owner, that we're moving that shared curb cut onto their property. And because of that, we have basically wasted space. If we don't use the parking, we put it right up against that road and actually use the road as our drive into some of our parking spaces. And we've got, the north part of the property is not developed yet, and the property owner is willing to work with us through that and make sure that from the visibility, the entire development of the site, you won't notice that there's that divergence of setback for parking.
Robin, you think that causes any issues at all for that particular divergence? Do you trigger use for that property most of the time?
I would say potentially. My concern would be if the site to the north develops, and if there was a stub in the rear, my only concern is that since those, those parking spots, you would have to back into or out of the drive aisle. And, you know, I think as the site stands right now, there's not going to be a lot of traffic. It's not going to be an issue. But should there be a stub farther east on the property to the north, then it could conceivably become an issue.
Yeah, we're only talking about, you know, just those parking spots. At the end, as that property develops to the north, there may also be the opportunity for shared parking because of the timing of uses of the different uses, depending on how that develops.
So I have a quick question. What formula did you guys come up with to get the 63 parking spots?
One, what fits. But two, you know, and you guys may have a better idea of why the 63 and how many people need to be packed. We, I saw Rebecca did some type of an analysis in terms of what we would expect in terms of full occupancy and use of all the courts, and it became less than 63. Then the issue is, will it be people watching? I don't know if anyone's watched pickleball before. I can't imagine watching it. I can imagine playing it, like, who has to watch it? But that's kind of how they came about it. It's just what they think that they need in terms of full occupancy of all the uses with all the phases completed.
So you guys are expecting like tournaments or something like that within the facility down the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These tournaments are...
I'm Bolaj Novak. I'm one of the owners for, with New Gen Tennis Academy. We are planning to have tournaments, but it's not like we're trying to plan Wimbledon or anything like that. Just, you know, smaller local tournaments and some that, you know, will have very limited viewers. It won't be, you know, hundreds of, hundreds and hundreds of viewers. So that's kind of the plan.
Is the ADA requirement of, you know, I'd say you have three spaces for that, is that some calculation that's used there? That's just a number you guys pick?
I think it's a percentage of the total parking spaces. Not something we just...
Do you have a percentage?
You have to have a minimum of that for first phase.
Any idea what that minimum, what that percentage is?
It varies per use group, but, I mean, I would say this probably is definitely more than, I mean, it probably requires two than three. More than likely, based on this layout. I don't know the exact percentage though.
Do you foresee there being any kind of a grading difference between the parking spaces and the drive, or is really the only separation between drive and parking spaces going to be a white line painted on the roadway?
I don't think it would be a white line. Those spaces in front come right off, right off roadway. Other than right now, other than our site. And even that, you know, that isn't the railroad tracks. It's just, you know, it'll be a question how that gets used depending on what happens. And then like I said, we're working with the property owner. They're excited about this, they think it involves other potential uses of the site. By their very accommodating on their access. As for the sidewalks, if you have a discussion now about stormwater, you're going to have to put it under the park block. If there's a larger facility, not just to the south of this, we may be able to use any little calculation and try and work with the county to get that possibility as well.
I see that the parking spaces that are right up against the road are shown as proposed future parking spaces. So you're not even looking at using that space for parking spaces in the initial phase one of this development, right?
Initial phase one is back towards the side towards the road.
Yeah, to, to give you guys a bit of an idea, for, for the tennis courts, it's usually, you know, two to four people max, maximum per court. So we'll have five tennis courts. That makes a maximum occupancy of 20 people. And then the pickleball courts, again, it's typically a double sport, but you can play singles, so you know, it's, it's about four people max, maximum per court. So you'll have 24 there. So typically, you know, no more than 40, 45 people, you know, actually playing now for the, for the viewing. Again, we're not going to have big tournaments or anything like that. And most of the time, it's not going to be a pickleball tournament and a tennis tournament going on at the same time. So we don't foresee the occupancy being a big issue in terms of parking.
Well, and some percentage of the participants and some percentage of the spectators are going to be sharing rides, so it isn't necessarily one car per player.
Yeah, I don't, somewhat, because I've seen it down in eight percent. There's couples that, you know, in life, I don't count them for a husband and wife. Game and insurance, and by the way, so it is, it is typically that they're showing rights.
Yeah.
I guess where I'm going with this is it may be that, once you've got phase one up and running, you may find, oh, we don't really need that many parking spaces. In which case, you just never strive for it.
In this case, and we, we were talking, we talked the last time that
Five to 10 years down the road.
Wow.
Yeah.
So that allows us, that's more to be responsive to what happens with the first phase. But you may be even come back in in five years with a modification of phase two, but
Yeah.
at least in our case, it's a possibility to deal with what will be down the road.
But these parking spaces for phase one, just north of the pickleball courts, those are needed immediately.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and those also have zero setback from the north. They're right on the roadway, right? Right up against it.
That's phase two there.
Can we see like phase one?
Yeah.
Because I thought I heard that the part going up against the railroad tracks is the part going in first.
Yeah, yeah. Pickleball courts are phase one, the east side of the property.
From the east side, you got the pickleball courts, green, right, and that's up there.
Yes, sir.
And we've got the tennis courts.
Yeah. The future building is proposed to go between tennis courts and the parking area.
So those, those parts of the north actually are ten. All the same, so it won't have as much conflict.
Right.
So the parking area on this end here, is that, that's not going to be developed in phase one?
To the back there.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that set of parking with the, with the two handicap spaces,
Yeah.
that's the part that's going to be developed first.
Right.
And so those will be right up against the roadway there, but it's literally the end of the line.
Literally, yeah.
Yeah.
So they might do spaces for a long time.
And what's the agreement in place with the property owner to the north on this access road? Is it, is there like a deed restriction or something that prohibits?
Yeah.
Okay.
And presumably a joint maintenance agreement as well, right?
And it's going to depend on the usage of all the power that you're...
Yeah. That property to the north, they're not going to have their own curb cut. Their access is going to, so their access is going to be off this road.
Right.
And if I can clarify, so I believe the, the entire parent parcel, including this parcel and the parcel to the north, the county engineer has allocated them two access points. So there will be this one access point, and then I believe they are due one additional access point on Green Meadows Drive.
So it's, it's possible that whatever happens to the north would have its own separate entrance and wouldn't necessarily be forced
Correct.
to use this one. Because what I was envisioning was that the turnaround at the end up against the railroad tracks, the northern one could end up not being a turnaround point. It could end up being access into that, that northern lot.
That's really for the fire department.
Yeah. Right. But it could turn into a distinction of an access for the other.
Right.
But with them having another, another curb cut possible, they may not want to do that. They may want access more directly to the road.
I guess getting back to Dennis's question, original question to this whole thing is, you know, the two divergences in relation to the parking, you know, the first being 63 spaces. We know that this isn't, this is what the zoning, the planned commercial office district, or the PC, what I get that if we were to meet that, I forget how many spots, you'd have to have like 200 spots or something. Not that many, but probably a good deal of them. So, you know, it's, that makes no sense. So I get the divergence there. 63, I mean, I, I see that, you know, it's pretty packed on here. You know, there's, there's not a whole lot of opportunity to add more, you know, adding up. If every single court had four people, they're, they're all playing doubles. You have 56 people, so that's about, you have seven, what, seven extra, yeah, so, so seven extra people to sit there, and that's what all phases built out, not just, you know, the first phase.
For the, for the doubles? Are you talking about the, are you, the future?
Yeah, if, if the whole thing, this whole thing was built out eventually, you have 63 spaces. And I see that you have nine additional proposed up there, but it, it, it would be 56 players that if they were all being used and all had doubles playing, you know. So that's where, I, I, I guess 63, it is what it is. I mean, I'm not, me personally, I, I don't think we need to be where the text would actually put you or significant amount of parking. It wouldn't make sense here. You know, I think the occupancy is going to be obviously much lower, given the use. So I'm okay with the 63. If there was an opportunity to get a couple more in, that'd be great, but I really don't even see any on here. The, the, the second part is the parking spaces up against the property line and not being six-foot setback. You know, the end parking space is down by the pickleball in phase one. I think obviously no, no problems there. It's at the end of the road. I doubt there's going to be a lot of traffic going down there. And, and in honesty, you know, in the first submittal you guys had when we last met, you know, all the parking was up front, and this actually is a response, I believe, to one of our comments, and primarily one of mine, was, you know, I, I measured from the closest spot to like the phase one courts. And it was like 160 or 200 and something feet. Yeah, and, and so I was like, that's, that's pretty excessive. So the fact that you pull parking closer to those courts, I appreciate you guys doing that, so I understand, you know, the again, you, you guys are working around a, a very specific sized use, so that the tennis court is the same size. You can't, you're not going to reduce that. It's not going to make it functional, so the parking up against there, I get, I get that as well. So, I mean, that's just my, that's just my, my take on it. I don't know if the board agrees or not, but
I agree, I mean.
Yeah, you do.
You have employees to take into account too.
But that's, that's why the two phases.
Yeah.
We can monitor things in the first phase, which would be changes, if people probably, you know, it's kind of the same, we need 63 spaces, we need 63. We want as many people there as possible too.
Yes.
So if, if it's true, if it ends up that we've got too many people there, not a bad thing. So we will accommodate that if things are going to have a problem back, that's necessary. There's also the opportunities that will, that will develop, and I would like to say to have shared access or shared curb cuts and, or shared parking with that as well. Especially because we're in the road, so.
Yeah, I mean, and thank you, because that actually was one other thing I was going to comment on is, so phase one and I, I don't see the exact 20, just under 2,500 square foot. You have an office building that's 2,500 square foot for phase one, and you have five tennis courts and six pickleball, and then in phase two, you're adding only three more tennis, but your future office is 6,000 square feet, so over double. So obviously, I think there's an opportunity with that is, is if you see that, okay, a lot of more people are coming to watch these in phase one, and we're filling this parking lot up now, we're going to add three more courts in five years. That building, you know, there's a lot of, if you really do need, truly need 6,000, you can go vertical, a second story, or something to pull that in and create more of a footprint for parking, and it would perfectly fit right there anyways. Or if you say, you know, phase one, we have a 2,500 square foot office building and it's more than adequate, we really don't need to add 6,000 more feet, but we can get 15 more parking spots in, then you know, if, if that need is there and you're working in a phase two, I'm assuming you guys are going to go ahead and, and add more parking if that's the case.
Was the intent for the additional office space, the 6,000 feet, for your use or to rent out?
Well, so far down the road, we haven't decided yet. Could be both. It was for our use, yes. Was the plan, that is the plan.
So there's a dashed... Is that aligning where the the initial set of parking spaces goes? Or, I mean, I guess I don't understand what that what that is.
Oh.
I'm not sure.
That's talking area, it doesn't mean any.
I believe that, I believe that's the underground stormwater detention.
Ah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, because they're later than that, it's part of that. That may go away, depending on what they're not going to use, you just allow them, and where are they going to be successful, it just allows us to do that.
Hmm. Moving on to the sign, where are you thinking it's going to go?
On one of them, I remember seeing, maybe on that signage, I mean, on Linsley.
Obviously, we have a left sign.
I think that, that's it right there, right?
Uh huh.
It's definitely a setback along, picking that up.
Yeah.
Well, looking at it with the trees there, assuming that it is, in fact, oriented the way it is, when those trees fill in, is anybody able to see the sign?
Like dog, yeah.
Yeah.
Cut underneath, do that.
Just give it, pruning the level to that side. If signage is one side, but it's not critical for this huge people, it's a destination, okay? People are going to drive by and say, oh, they want to take it up more, depending on that.
Well, especially when the dome is up, it'll be pretty obvious where it is.
We never tried to.
No signage on the buildings, correct?
I think that's the sign, though, because the building comes down, the members will come down, there's, there's maybe some directional signage.
So if there's going to be signage on the future office phase two, you would expect that to come back for approval of that, yeah.
We haven't accommodated that.
Right.
I do, I do want to touch base on one of the staff comments as well, something we discussed in the last meeting, which is the timeframe on which the dome will be up. I know that we talked about, I think originally we were saying November to March, and I think you had mentioned October to March, which is, it's fine, we we said that, you know, we wanted to at least allow for some flexibility with weather and everything else. That text, obviously, we need to put in before it goes to the trustees. Do you know specifically now what that would be roughly? Are you going to say October to March is the plan with the flexibility of a plus or minus fifteen or twenty days or whatever?
What we'd like to say is, October to March is the plan, with the possibility of as far as, as late as May fifteenth, but no later than May fifteenth, and that's that's the proposed language we have.
So forty-five days after?
Forty-five days after the, after of March date. And that's depending on weather, but that that, we've already discussed it, that'll be in the text.
Yeah.
When it gets before the trustees.
Well, forty-five days, you know, we we mentioned that today. Primarily because I think we had talked about March, we said, yeah, plus or minus, it seems like thirty days would be reasonable versus, uh, okay, but.
You know, if you took a look at the weather this year, it would have stayed open until, I mean, it stayed up until May fifteenth because of the wet, the rain that we've had. And 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 we run into, my family has playing Spear Garden down in, we run into this all the time, you know, we, it's, is, how do you hire people in anticipation of the weather? And and April and May is a problem, it just, it always is in Ohio. And it has nothing to do typically with the cold, it has to do with rain. I mean, if you're a Cleveland Indians fan, they've been rained out like fifteen to twenty times already, and and it's just Ohio. So that's, that's why we wanted the flexibility until the May fifteenth.
And I think we originally thought that flexibility was being added, it would be fifteen days or the twenty days or whatever, and so like thirty days was still giving a flexibility, so that it, still known as a date, but it's, to me, that just sometimes it's bringing it out.
You know, we're fine with with thirty days, I mean, October is a a date set, it's the, it's when we take it down. And it takes a few days to get it down anyhow, so if we start May one, we get it, it's okay with, and if we find that the, we can always come back and and if it's adopted.
I, me personally, I don't really have an issue with one way or the other. I I think you can, I think you should make that decision.
We'd like to have it till May fifteenth, but.
I would rather leave that in your hands as a business decision, rather rather than, oh, it's zoned, it has to come down, I want this to be, I want this to be left in your hands as a business decision, just because of what you said, yes, the weather's unpredictable, yes, we very much had a rainy, colder through April and May, it would not have been feasible taking that down.
Well, I look at it similar to you, right, our pools aren't open until Memorial Weekend, so I I think it's the same premise, right, is they're based on weather, so I I think it's, to me, it's, or sixty days, but.
Yeah, because, because I don't, I don't see any particular advantage in leaving it up.
No, we want to get it open as soon as we can, with the weather change.
Rather, you'd rather be open.
Why would we mind it being up longer? What's the issue?
I want, I want, I want it to be a business decision, that's what I'm saying, I want it to be a business decision, rather than written into the the agreement of code, here it's got to be this, I want it to be a business.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of it, in fact, the other way.
It should be open all the, I mean, up all the time.
Well, what I'm looking at is, all right, so we've got this week, right, where we've got ridiculously high temperatures. If you get a couple of weeks' notice on a forecast that we're in for two weeks of ninety-five degree-plus temperatures, it's not crazy to think you're going to want to put that dome back up for 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 air conditioning.
Yeah.
And and why would we mind?
It's no, it's no expensive to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where are you using your money for?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd appreciate the, till May fifteenth, if we could.
Yeah, so let me, let me tell you what my thought is, since I'm going to make a comment, my thought is, so that the community and those that are around there know a specific end date, and I understand May fifteenth is the specific end date, but nevertheless, if this dome is going to be coming up and going up, coming down every year, to have the flexibility, oh, boom, it it dropped in April because we discovered that the weather is going to be bad, and that's going down, she pull, can't, just even from a perception of what the community is going to look like, what is it going to look like on this date? So you originally proposed to come in here and say, hey, we're going to take it down in March. We thought, and I, you know, I'm in business, I love business, I'm all about season, opportunity to maximize the moment, so we suggested, maybe the weather might be good, maybe better, and maybe you should consider extending that, so I was all in favor of that. We, when we had that conversation, it was extension for ten, fifteen, twenty days, whatever the story was. I was surprised that you came in and you went all the way that far, that in the normal circumstance, I'd probably would be.
Yeah, I think what we really did was take your suggestion and then took up the weather in in May of of two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm just thinking it needs to be, I mean, based on your original proposal, when you said this, this business strives the most, be up until March, assuming you know your business, you know it well, give the community an understanding of exactly that it will be up no later than this date, and I think that should be thirty days from your original thought, so that's the reason I'm suggesting.
We would like, I I would say, just based on every, what everybody's saying right now, there's a majority that is in favor of March fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
Or, I'm sorry, May fifteenth, is that correct, in me saying that?
Well, I'm okay with that, I think, here we got to look at this areas, an industrial area, commercial industrial, next to the railroad tracks, I don't think your dome matters one way or the other. We're sitting next to some neighborhoods, I guess I, my arguments may be a little different, but where this is located, I don't think it matters.
I appreciate that.
You know, and that's why, that's why, that's why I think that that this is really a business decision, and and shouldn't be limited, yeah, we can put a number on it, if somebody wanted to do that, that's okay, I'm not going to be opposed to it. I want it to be a business decision, it's an industrial area, nobody cares about this stuff. Excellent, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, if we go, if we go into May and we have a monsoon for three, four weeks here, you know, you're out of business, right?
Right.
Mark, you're good with the May fifteenth date? I mean, obviously, with, from what you said.
Yes, and I mean, honestly, I wouldn't care if there were no dates, if they could put it up and down whenever they felt that it was a reasonable business decision to do it.
Yeah.
Twelve months a year, I mean, you know, whatever makes sense to them, that's a given point and time.
I think it's an overstep on us to live it when when you can.
Yeah, we prefer not to have.
That's my personal.
We prefer to make it a business decision. It was a residential area, letting it or something like that.
That's a different story.
I mean, we're not going to tell a company to take down the Christmas lights, right?
Well, and and again, it's it's one of these uses that the clients are going to, not the clients, but the customers are going to say, when's it coming down? I mean, you know, the weather's nice, when's it coming down?
Exactly.
And and they're not going to want to be inside when the weather's nice outside. So if we can avoid any dates, we'd, we'd be happy with that, and let it be a business decision, but we'll, but we've had that discussion before, and we've given those dates and and.
I mean, I think as a compromise, in, and I'll just ask this for the board to to consider this, should, I mean, is end of May, just by the end of May acceptable? I guess from your standpoint.
That'd be good, that'd be perfect for us, yes.
If we're going to go to the end of May, we might as well say, the dates don't matter, why are we even putting the date in there? I mean, we go from March, we go from March, then in one breath, we say it's a business decision, then let's rest on it being a business decision then. I can run with that better than I can if you're going to come up with some other type of date, we just told you, I want to do it whenever I want to do it, right? I made the argument, we originally said to you, let's extend it, right, because we thought that was reasonable. You came back, you took advantage of that, and you said, hey, let's extend it even more. You said, hey, it'll be a business decision. You said, doesn't matter to you at all. You said, May thirty, what difference does it make now? Might as well, put anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe our original text had it in it at all, I don't think there was a limitation in our original text.
Matter of fact, I, you shouldn't have any limitation based on the fact that we can't agree on what's.
I'm fine with no limitation on that.
I'll submit to that.
I wouldn't care if there's a date on it, I I really.
I don't want a date.
I mean, if there's a date, I I wouldn't prevent me from voting for.
I I agree with it, because the date became artificial.
It it becomes artificial now, so.
I'd I'd prefer not to have any limitation.
I'm okay with that, too, I can go with that better than I could, oh, I have to make it this.
And I'd rather, we'd rather have it that way.
I'm in favor with you then.
Okay, thank you.
There should be a minimum of people planning, you know, dome raising or or dome taking down parties, you know, where they're expecting, I don't know, carnival rides, you know, it's just not something anybody's really going to be planning their lives around.
Right.
Whenever you decide to take this thing up or down, I just don't see that matter.
I just think, I think so, the original text, in in the text today, what it said is this is a temporary structure, I think, what what Les, I think his point, and maybe even Christine made before him, and then Les expounded upon that on saying, let's set the parameter for for the dates, but what Christine was saying in the first one, and I'm, I, hopefully I'm not misquoting her, but I I was something along the lines that if we're going to call it a temporary structure, we should set the boundaries of what that is, and and the reason being because then, if we're going to call it temporary structure, and what's going to limit that from being temporary? It could go up all year and stay up all year, and and that's why I think we had originally said, well, let's, let's get some dates, and then Les took it a step further and said, well, let's give some flexibility, because if we say specifically this date and specifically this date, and that's, you know, within a range, because they, I think originally it was November to March is is roughly when they would be putting up the structure in November and taking it down in in March, and then now it's, you know, we're talking October to May or whatever it is, more than likely, it will be put up and taken down within those months, depending on weather.
But it could theoretically be up eight months in a particularly strange year, based on what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's what, yeah, I mean, you're right, you're right, and I think what we were just trying to avoid is.
It'd become a permanent structure.
Allowing the, yeah, allowing the ability to just have it up all year.
And that's, and.
Because, because we didn't call it, they they came in saying it's a temporary structure.
And, but, well, I'm, I'm, I'm asking a question, it's not a leading question, it's just a question. What is our concern about the structure having the word temporary associated with it, if it was ending up for whatever business reason, if it was up for twenty-four months straight? Why do we, why do we care? Is there, is there something about our standards for a permanent structure that this couldn't possibly meet, and that therefore, you know, we're looking for some kind of design differentiation or something?
Yeah, to answer, actually, architecturally, we have to meet all fire codes, and in fact, it has to be inspected every time we put it up again, to meet the fire code, it's going to have more inspections than a typical building when we bring it up and down. Our goal is to take it down, I mean, that's, our goal is not to have it.
Right.
And so, you know, we we like the idea that the business makes the decision, but that decision is, we need to get it down as soon as the weather permits, and so it, but from a permanent or temporary, it's got to meet all the fire codes, all the exit codes.
Well, I'm thinking more for aesthetics, for example.
You're right, Mark, and that's exactly why, it's, if if it was intended to stay up for twenty-four months, then we should be building a, constructing some type of more of, more of a temporary structure that has more of an aesthetic to it, you know?
Right, because this is a big featureless white plane.
Yeah, I mean, look at the rendering down here, it's, that's, that's what you're going to get, now, you know as well as I do, as as soon as people start seeing this thing, they're, they're going to say, what, what's going on here? And it's going to be a lot easier as as the township responds to say, well, this is, this is just a temporary structure, like there, there's one in circle, or.
One in Columbus, actually.
Columbus, and there's one, yeah, there's a couple, but but it's, it's, you know, this isn't, this is just made to allow this place to be functional during, you know, it's a sport complex, and.
Well, as an analogy, of the BJ's Warehouse, there was a lot of discussion about the aesthetics of a big, long, featureless wall, and we didn't like that, we didn't want that. So I'm presuming that the reason why we want to declare this a temporary structure.
We didn't declare it because we didn't want it.
Oh, they did, yeah, okay.
We, our question was, what's the definition?
Right.
From their perspective, temporary, they said, October to March.
Okay.
Which he's already sticking that, I said, well, you know, sometimes maybe you want to extend that a little bit, hence we came up with the first thing, going back to the original cocktail, when you just said, the community is going to be like, what is this big thing here? We were also, at least from my perspective, thought we were trying to establish that deadline date, so that we could say to the community, that's just a temporary structure, this is what it does, and this is the reason for the element, and whatever the story may be, and then it will come down once a year, that's what the.
Well, I think, I think the other end of it is, you don't want another, like BJ's Warehouse Club or some other business coming in and saying, well, why do we have to have all these architectural features, when you let these guys put this big white dome up and leave it up for, you know, nine months?
This is the same dome, Olympic pools, you, I mean, you know, and that's sitting right smack dab in a residential neighborhood.
But that's Columbus.
I know, I understand, I understand.
And we're prepared.
But but with some very expensive homes there on East River Broadway, it's sitting right there, right there in Clintonville Beach Wall.
Oh, yeah.
And this is sitting in an industrial area, I kind of agree with you, why do we care?
And 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 if you take a look across the railroad tracks, those houses are some distance away, I mean, there's a big, a huge field between this and where you have the first set of houses.
Does it have to, does it have to absolutely come down once a year, Mark?
They have to?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
So it's theoretically, it could stay up more.
It could, yeah, I mean, it's, the the bigger one does not have a.
It could, yeah, I mean, it's, the, the bigger one does not have a, an air conditioner. Smaller one, so. I think that's, that becomes an issue in the summer.
Yeah.
You don't want to make it that. But yeah. Yeah, our goal is to obviously take it down as, as soon as the weather's nice. But if we were having some, you know, rainy weeks and with April and weather starts getting cold in end of September, like we would like some flexibility.
Well, you know, the weather man is the only man who gets to keep his job regardless of how wrong he is. So you can't depend on what he says then, you can look at all the forecasts, you won't look at.
Why don't we have a compromise and just, and it's based on what the pools do in the area and stuff like that? Let's, let's say, May 30th. And just have a compromise like that.
Then we're fine with that.
We, we have an end date, it's customer driven, really, May 30th is not going to impact your, your turn it out.
It can't be put up before this date and it has to be taken down by this date. And wherever in there you decide to do it, good for you.
And there's no way you're going to do it up in the summer because you got your customers and you got one house, so, yeah.
Flexibility on the front end, like I'd say it would be November.
Flexibility, they'll do it. Yeah, I mean, just, just with a, with a contractor point of view, I mean, you may call them, but it may be weeks before they come out and take it down.
I, I think we need to be able to tell the community, it's going to go up no earlier than this date, it's going to be down by this date.
Or we could just say that it's got to be down three months of the year or four months of the year.
No earlier, my position, no earlier than this date. You guys came here with the first proposal, right? You guys told us this is the date, you're experts in the business, right? You know the maximum time you can maximize the use of this and maximize the moment, right? Say in October, so maybe October the 1st.
You got to make, yeah.
I don't like May 30th, I'd rather go with what he suggested, May 15th at this point. But, you know, whatever the majority says, that's what we're doing. But I do believe there needs to be a specific date.
And that's a reasonable request, yeah. No, I, I understand that. I, I say, come to that compromise because again, they're not going to keep it up when their customers are asking for it to be taken down, right? So I guess it's October 1st to the May 30th.
That'd be great, thank you. Especially the, the big one without the, without the air conditioner, right? They're going to be, they're going to be screaming, please take this thing down, we're baking it here.
Great place to lose weight in.
Alright.
Yeah, please.
You know, one of the owners as well, maybe this will facilitate this conversation, but our goal is to really take it down as soon as possible, not only because it's financially more economic, but also our players really demand it. Most of our players, we, we are currently in business for two years now. We work with a lot of high performance unit players. And in tennis, it's important to play indoors and outdoors. Outdoors is different than when you play indoors, even though you're playing on the same surface. So even now, we, we're renting courts at an indoor facility that we have a good connection with. And, and we're running our summer program there three days a week. And our clients took it like, oh, man, it's so hot, but we'll keep coming to you. But we need to play outside because we have tournaments outside. So our goal is really to take it down as soon as possible. Yes, and, and as far as the aesthetics go, I, if I can also participate in that conversation, that would be for just hopefully five to 10 years, because then the main building would be in front of all the bubbles. So it won't really be a visual anymore after that.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll get that language in the, in the text.
That language.
For the trustees. Alright, any other comments from the board?
The sidewalk, did you say that, what was that, that was a staff comment by the?
On Green Meadows Drive?
Yeah. Did you say that's been added or already worked out?
That's in the original text. I, I assume that the way that gets enforced is we don't get a occupancy permit until that sidewalk's built. But that's in the original text for the master area.
The regional planning commission said, they made a note saying the sidewalk perhaps should be constructed along the frontage.
And there will be a sidewalk in front of it.
Located in the location approved by Delaware County, given it's a located asset, okay? So that's conditional approval. But so is that in the text or it's not?
I don't, I don't believe it's in our text, but I think it's in the master text. But if, if it needs to be clarified, we'll put it in our text because it's, it's our intention.
So it, the, it, it was in the original text. To me, the language is a little deceptive, where it says, "The landowner seller will install, if not already installed, a 10-foot wide asphalt trail at the expense of the landowner/seller or its assigns along one side of Green Meadows Drive. The opposite side of the public road will include a sidewalk constructed by each individual lot owner, including the applicant as buyer of the premises as applicable during the construction of the improvements on the premises that is subject of this application." To me, that language indicated that there would be a sidewalk or multi-use path on this property in particular. There was an email from Ms. Mott that indicated that it would be on the opposite side of the road. And that would meet the one side of Green Meadows Drive requirement. And to our staff and to regional planning staff, having pedestrian connectivity on the other side of the street is not sufficient. So we, I, I personally, as staff, would like to see some stipulation that there is pedestrian connectivity on the frontage of this property.
We agree to that.
Okay, so you will.
Yes.
The text will be amended, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
There's a lighting plan, right?
Yeah.
That's already been, yeah, we went, yeah.
Okay. Did you want to look at that, Phil, or?
I trust you guys. I was just wondering if the, if the sign was going to be lit. But if it's just a, an aluminum sign, I would presume that they're going to be, occasions when there's nighttime activity there, you might want to have lighting for the sign, even if it's just, you know, a floodlight on each side or something.
Yeah, I, I don't know that anything we have precludes lighting of the sign. I got to, you know, signage on this, signage was sort of an afterthought. We want a sign, but it's really not critical to the use of this property for us. So we, if it's not, we'll have some kind of lighting on it, but it's not, it's not going to be a major component of this project by any means.
Oh, no, I would, I wouldn't think so. And presumably, whatever lighting we might decide to put up, you would look at our.
Yes, in your current guidelines.
Okay. And then the streetlights on the access is going to be taken care of by the property to the north as well with that access road improvement?
Yes.
Alright. Any more comments? Any public comment? No? Alright, anything more from staff?
No.
Okay. Can I get a recommendation for approval of the zoning application Z O N dash 22 dash 05, new gen tennis facility with modifications?
Aye.
Second?
Second?
No. You second?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate you.
You guys work with our local high schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, great.
Alright, so we got some meeting minutes here. I wish you just went out of state from everything. So I apologize, I, I did not send out these meeting minutes to the commission for your review. So if you want to go ahead and approve them sight unseen, you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, we can postpone the approval of those minutes until the next meeting on June 28th.
Can we get some clarification on that? Because I thought that we didn't have to, we're going to, we're going to misunderstand it. I thought that because everything was recorded, we didn't have to.
Because we record everything, we were able to change the way that we document them. So it used to be word for word, everything everybody said. And then now we've gone to a narrative, what are we calling it? A journal. A journal version.
So we just, so the review is to make sure that the intent of it is.
Correct, yes. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So we can, we can just, since no one's been able to review those, and we're missing Christine, who's, was a part of most of these, let's, let's just go ahead and, can we just table those then? And you can send them out and we'll get them on the next one? Yeah, I, I apologize, that was my oversight.
No worries.
Alright, well, anything else, Rob?